Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock on June the sixth, 2023. I'd like to welcome you all to Richland County Council's regular session. This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Branham.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton. We have a quorum.
I should be online.
Not at this time.
Okay. I direct to reflect that I did speak with Ms. Newton prior to tonight's meeting. She is away on business. However, she did indicate that she would be attending this evening's meeting virtually. So at some point, I expect that Ms. Newton will sign on. Next item on the agenda is item two, the invocation, which was supposed to have been given by the Honorable Ms. Newton. But I am going to ask that the theologian of Richland County Council, the Honorable Cheryl English, give this evening's invocation.
Y'all so ready. Let us look to the Lord. Father, it's in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that we come to you now, Lord, thanking you for who you are, your majesty, your deity, your glory, your honor, and your splendor. God, we stand in awe of your power and your might. We thank you for the mighty works of your hand. Father, as we, your servants, God, decide the business of Richland County, we need your blessing. We need the wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and revelation that only comes from you. Guide us, oh God. Keep us forever in thy heart. Father, look after the staff and this council. God, bless the citizens of Richland County. God, we thank you and we praise you for all that we do. God, we just ask that you be glorified in everything that we do. These are all blessings we ask and thanks we give in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
And before we move to the next item, Ms. Newton has signed on. So Ms. Newton, good evening to you. I believe she's muted. Ms. English, would you care to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? English, thank you for those moving and stirring words of prayer.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Mr. Pew.
Mr. Chair, I would like to amend the agenda to add Blythewood Girls Track Team to be recognized with a proclamation for item four E.
Second.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Branham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
All right, and we have multiple proclamations tonight. So to avoid, I guess, having a logistical nightmare on our hands, we're going to just have the proclamations read one by one. And then once we are finished with reading all the proclamations, then each, whoever it is that is here on behalf of their respective proclamation could come down and pose with members of council over here at the seal for the photo op. First item is item four A, a proclamation recognized in June as National Safety Month. Madam Vice Chair, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A proclamation recognized in June as Safety Month. Each year, more than 2,600,000 workers suffer from serious job-related injuries or illnesses. And over 5,190 Americans die from work-related incidents. Thousands more are permanently disabled with even more injured or maimed. Richland County recognizes that to reduce the occurrence of workplace accidents, local government employers must demonstrate an ongoing dedication to the safety of their employees. The observance of National Safety Month is a positive and proactive way to advance our goal of reducing workplace accidents and to demonstrate our commitment to the safety of Richland County employees. National Safety Month and associated safety programs raise awareness, provide quality training and education, and foster an active safety culture. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pew, Yvonne McBride, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Dawn Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Safety Month in Richland County, South Carolina, and accordingly encourage Richland County employees to renew their focus on workplace safety.
Next item on the agenda is item four B. This is a proclamation recognizing Harvest Hope Food Bank and declaring June as National Hunger Awareness Month. That will be given by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A proclamation recognizing Harvest Hope Food Bank and declaring June as Hunger Awareness Month. Nearly 35,000 residents of Richland County suffer from food insecurity defined as a lack of access, ability, availability, or income to acquire healthy, safe, culturally appropriate food. Food insecurity contributes to the development of nutrition-related illnesses, and children facing hunger are more likely to repeat a grade at elementary school, experience developmental impairments, and have more social and behavioral problems. Harvest Hope operates programs that provide food to these most vulnerable, including children, seniors, and residents in rural areas of our community who lack access to grocery stores. Since beginning in 1981 as its shared vision of business leaders in the faith community to provide Columbia's hungry, Harvest Hope has expanded its reach to 20 counties across the state, including Richland County. Harvest Hope now provides more than 20 million meals annually to food pantries, shelters, and soup kitchens in the Midlands, PD, and upstate of South Carolina. With its commitment to the values of social justice, integrity, collaboration, innovation, accountability, excellence, and respect for all people, Harvest Hope espouses trouts, excuse me, traits that Richland County leadership desires for the community. Richland County Council desires to build toward a future in which no child need go hungry and all residents have access to healthy, affordable, and fresh food. Now therefore be it proclaimed that County Council recognizes Harvest Hope Food Bank for its contributions to Richland County and does hereby proclaim June 2023 as Hunger Awareness Month in Richland County.
Next item on the agenda is item four C. It's a proclamation recognizing County Environmental Education Analyst, Ms. Shonda Cooper. And that will be read by Assistant County Administrator Eric Jensen. Mr. Jensen, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really quickly, I want to thank the council for entrusting me with so many wonderful employees. This is the highlight of what I get to do, to come and celebrate the excellent people that work for Richland County. And if this looks like deja vu, almost exactly one year ago, I was here celebrating Ms. Cooper's accolades. So I get to do it again. So a proclamation recognizing Chanda Cooper's 2023 National Leadership in Education Award. Whereas in March 2023, Ms. Chanda Cooper received the Project Learning Tree National Leadership in Education Award. And whereas Ms. Cooper has served as Chair of the South Carolina Project Learning Tree Steering Committee and has been a member of its steering committee for more than 10 years. And whereas she acts as an ambassador for Project Learning Tree and other environmental education initiatives in Richland County and across the state. And whereas her educational efforts reached more than 50,000 students and more than 100 schools in three different school districts. And whereas Ms. Chanda Cooper was previously recognized as South Carolina's Environmental Educator of the Year by the Environmental Education Association of South Carolina. And whereas Ms. Cooper is a wonderful ambassador for Richland County, and her passion for conservation was inspired by her childhood farm life and by her family, who all love working and playing outdoors and instilled in her a deep love and respect for the environment. And whereas Chanda believes every child should have the chance to put their hands in the earth, to wade in a creek, to climb a tree, to eat something that they have grown from a seed, and to learn to care for the land that sustains us. And whereas Richland County is a better place because of her passion, dedication, and consistent sunny disposition, which I can attribute and I can confirm. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pew, Yvonne McBride, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Dawn Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton recognize and honor Ms. Chanda Cooper for her contributions to environmental education in Richland County and throughout the state of South Carolina.
Next item on the agenda is item four D, a proclamation recognizing Westwood High School Girls Track and Field Team. That would be read by the county's PIO office. Ms. Bennett, you recognize.
Sorry. A proclamation recognizing Westwood High School Girls Track and Field Team. Whereas on May 19th, 2023, the Westwood High School's Girls Track and Field Team won the 4A State Girls Track and Field Competition, or Championship. And whereas we celebrate their exceptional accomplishment in securing the first-ever team state championship in the school's history by winning the 4A State Championship for Girls Track and Field. Whereas, under the exceptional leadership of head coach Cory Head, assisted by Akisha Flegler, Rod Lorick, Nate Gant, and Eric Vogel, the Westwood High School's Girls Track and Field Program has demonstrated remarkable dedication and skill. This year, they have been led by seniors Brianna Rodriguez, Takora Gaskin, Katie Canty, and Raven Johnson, who have exemplified extraordinary leadership and commitment. Whereas, we also commend the outstanding underclassmen, including Emma Ashley, Tiana Davis, Courtney's Pope, Ayana Arons, Harper Ramsdale, Jemaya Samuel, Jemaya Carter, Amira Coleman, and Tiana Glover for their significant contributions to the team's success. Furthermore, we acknowledge the remarkable achievements of first-year athletes London Brooks, Jaquia Martin Maven, Christina Tindall, Rebecca Ashley, and Camille McEtrin, who have shown great promise. Whereas, these remarkable athletes have earned 10 individual regional champion titles, championship titles, seven All-State Awards, broken five school records, earned three individual state champion titles, and have two athletes ranked nationally in the top 10. They have also secured one lower state championship title and the first-ever team state championship for Westwood High School. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Councilman Derek Pew of Richland County District Two proudly recognizes the historic achievements of the Westwood High School Girls Track and Field Program. Their unwavering dedication and pursuit of excellence has brought great honor and pride to the school, community, and Richland County.
Councilman Pew, you recognize.
Congratulations, Red Hawk Nation. I did not realize that this was the first team championship in school's history. You girls need to take a, excuse me, you young ladies need to take a bow. That's a huge accomplishment. You will be in history books forever. When your kids are going to Westwood High School, you can go back and say, "We won the first state championship." Hats off. This is what makes District Two mighty, because we win state championships and we do all kind of great stuff. So congratulations, ladies. Red Hawk Nation, let's go.
Next item on the agenda is item four E, which is the Blythewood Girls Track Team, Track and Field Team. It's a proclamation recognizing the Blythewood Girls Track and Field Team. And that will be given by Ms. Bennett of the PIO office.
I'm gonna take my time. A proclamation recognizing the Blythewood High School Girls Track and Field Team. Whereas, the Blythewood Girls Track and Field Team has achieved an exceptional feat, securing the title of 2023 five-age state champions, led by a group of remarkable seniors, including Ariana Williams, Haley Duncan, Jasmine Young, and Ashlyn Scott. The Blythewood Girls Team demonstrated their commitment and dedication to excellence. Whereas, their remarkable performance resulted in an impressive score of 93 points, surpassing the second-place team with a margin of 33 points. This victory is a testament to their hard work, skill, and unwavering determination to break their own school record in the four-by-800 relay with a time of nine minutes and 23 seconds. Whereas, the astounding contributions of Haley Hightower, Mallory Hill, Anna Kelly, Peyton Hightower, Eva Pendleton, Zion Harvey, Olivia Taylor, Amina Roan, Madison Ross, Anaya Flucker, and Elizabeth Bagala, I apologize, who displayed remarkable skill and dedication in their respective events are commended. And whereas, the team was led by the incomparable leadership of head coach Alicia Taylor, along with the support of coaches Steven Inabett, Patrick Kelly, Gabriel Flores, and Shashonda Harvey, who will be leading the team to the national championship at the University of Philadelphia. And whereas, these remarkable athletes have earned seven individual region championship titles, 12 All-State Awards, broken seven school records, earned four individual state champion titles, and had 14 athletes ranked nationally. They are also secured the upper state championship title and the first-ever team state championship for Blythewood High School. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Councilman Derek Pew of Richland County District Two recognizes the Blythewood Girls Track and Field Team for their outstanding achievements and recognizes their hard work, resilience, and commitment to excellence. This proclamation serves as a testament to their success and brings honor to themselves, the school, and the Richland County community.
Congratulations, ladies. I at least did that on purpose, because they don't want me to talk about District, the mighty District Two. Congratulations, ladies. Hats off to you guys, too. I didn't realize that this was the school's first state championship as a team. I have had the pleasure of following you guys, because y'all have an outstanding track dad in Dr. Ross, who follows his daughter Madison, who was once in my after-school program at Richland County Parks and Rec. But you ladies have done a wonderful job. I'm looking forward to keeping up with y'all when y'all get to the pin relays, go down to Pennsylvania, up to Pennsylvania, and represent Richland County to the fullest. Congratulations, ladies.
And at this time, we will begin the photo ops. So let's begin with the proclamation recognized in June as National Safety Month. So if there's anyone here, as it pertains to that proclamation, please come down and make your way over to the county seal.
We would like to just take a minute to thank council for your continued support of the safety and health of the employees of Richland County. Thank you again for everything you do.
I want to say thank you to Richland County. We do cover 20 counties in our state, but I will say this is my home. I live down the street. My kids go to school here, not District Two, but that's okay. We won't fight about that. But congratulations to the track team. But I do want to say thank you, because our mission and our role at Harvest Hope is to keep families in their home, to keep people employed, to keep moms taking care of their children, because we step into that moment when they have to choose between paying a bill, paying for childcare, paying for a healthcare bill, the electricity's more expensive, and buying food. And that's where we can step in to create a sustainable neighborhood, to create sustainable communities, and to create sustainable families. So I appreciate your partnership. As we continue to address this in Richland County, we can do better and we will together. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, members of council. I am very grateful to Richland County Council and administration for continuing to support my colleagues and me in our mission to conserve the natural resources of Richland County and to educate the public about the importance of becoming good stewards of our environment. My work would not be possible without the staff and resources you provide for the Conservation Division. I just celebrated a 12-year work anniversary with Richland County, and I hope to continue this work for many years to come. They say if you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together. Environmental educators in Richland County are prepared to go far, and I need to recognize and thank my colleagues in the audience, who are here representing the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, the Richland County Conservation Commission, the Environmental Education Association of South Carolina, the South Carolina Forestry Commission, the Grazing Lands Coalition, Green Step Schools, and others. Without all of them, this work would not be possible. Lastly, please accept my invitation to join us on the Richland County Ag and Art Tour this weekend. We have 15 tour sites across Richland County that will be educating the public about local farms and foods. It's a great time to celebrate our community resources. Thank you again.
Quickly, I just want to say thank you to the council. Thank you to Coach Knight. It was a long, hard season, but these young ladies worked tremendous this year. As was previously stated, our seniors led this team throughout the year, worked hard on the track as well as off the track in the classroom as well. So thank you.
I would like to thank you all for acknowledging us today. We did a very good job of representing the county, the state, and next We did a very good job of representing the county, the state, and next we were representing South Carolina at the national level. Our girls have worked really hard for this, and stay tuned for more.
Coach.
For those of you who don't know, Coach Hawkins and I ran track together at Lower Richland High School. And she comes from a family of great track athletes, and her dad was actually one of the coaches. In fact, he coached the boys and the girls at Lower Richland. And so she and I have a history that goes back well over 20 years. I am not surprised, just at the level of excellence that your young ladies are performing at, considering what I remember about you, you know, from our high school years, as well as, you know, your family. And so I am extremely proud of you. Keep up the good work. I do follow you on Facebook as well, but just know that I am deeply, you know, proud of what you're doing and the work. And so, and just continue to keep doing what you've been doing ever since I've known you since high school, okay?
All right, thank you.
It's okay to admit if you outran him.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Item 5A, Approval of the Minutes from the Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 Budget Public Hearing on May 11, 2023. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes? All right, entertain a motion.
It's a move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 5B, Minutes from the Regular Session, May 16, 2023. Any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes? All right, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda, Item 5C, Minutes from the Zoning Public Hearing, May 23, 2020, May 23 rather, 2023. Any changes, additions, or deletions? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Can we have a motion?
I'm sorry.
Approval.
Intertain a motion. It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item 5D, the Minutes from the Special Call Meeting Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 Budget, Second Reading for May 25, 2023. I will entertain a motion for approval.
It's a move, Mr. Chair.
All right. Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I just wanted to recognize a couple of elected officials in the chamber tonight. I see the chairwoman from Richland School District One, Commissioner Cheryl Harris. Good evening to you, Madam Chair. And also see Commissioner Angela Clyburn. Good evening to you, Ms. Clyburn. And also, not an elected official, but he's affiliated with Richland One, and that is Superintendent Dr. William Witherspoon. Good evening to you as well. Next item on the agenda is Item Six, which is Adoption of the Agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions? All right, entertain a motion. It's a move.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Weaver?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item Seven, Reported the Attorney for Executive Session Items. Mr. Wright, you recognize, sir.
Yes, we have two matters for executive session, both pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70, subsection A2, for legal advice. The first one is 7A, Allen University Property Purchase, 1741 Cusman Drive, Columbia, South Carolina, 29203, and B, Solid Waste and Recycling Division, Valentine Property Purchase.
All right, both of these are contractual matters, right?
That's correct.
Any outside legal counsel?
There are none.
But usually, we would wait until later in the meeting to take up items that do not involve outside legal counsel, but it appears that counsel would have to take action, you know, it's, looks like these are on the agenda. Yeah, so item, yeah, 13, whatever, but they're on the agenda, but it would require counsel action.
That's correct.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
It's a move.
Second.
All right, move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Tracy?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Into executive session.
So moved, second.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresa. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Direct reflect that we went into executive session with respect to items seven A and B on the agenda pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy, both were contractual matters. We received information as well as legal advice and no action was taken. And before I move to the next item on the agenda, just want to recognize our county auditor, the Honorable Paul Brawley. Good to see you this evening, Mr. Auditor. Next item on the agenda is item eight, which is citizens' input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Next item on the agenda is item nine, citizens' input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two individuals that signed up to speak this evening. The first is Charlene Metz. If you would come forward, please. Hi. Would you please state your first and last name as well as your address? You'll be given two minutes to speak and you'll hear the timer when your two minutes has expired.
It's written down so I can go fast.
All right, let's see if you can make it.
Okay, okay. My name is Charlene Metz. I live at one thirty-two Charlie Griner Road in Ermo, which is in the Dutch Fork area. Been in Richland County all my life. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. Our request is to seek council approval to change from one existing road named Elton Metz Lane to another existing road named Arctic Court Extension. My husband and I own the Arctic Court Road property and are also trying to purchase this piece of property that is adjacent to our property. The attorney who reviewed the property title advised that we needed to change the road name in the title to Arctic Court Extension, and that change must be approved by you. This came about when a land subdivision occurred several years ago, and then the property adjacent was rendered unavailable to reach the new piece of property. The owner at that time approached us to arrange for using our road as access. This road has been used for the access for several years. That owner recently passed away, and we wish to purchase this property from the estate. The Arctic Court Access has been surveyed and a new plat prepared and recorded. Our attorney prepared the paperwork for council approval. Mr. Branham, our council representative from our area, has advised that the paperwork is going through the channels here, and he plans to bring it up at the appropriate time before you all. I'm here respectfully requesting that this matter be expedited. As to add to our saga, we have a family of five who has, who have been waiting for months to get in this house, and they are practically homeless. So I would just wanted to appear and ask for this. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next is Tommy, and I'm sorry, Tommy, I'm sorry, I can't read your last names.
Oh, Mr. Plonk was with me, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so he doesn't need to speak, okay. Well, Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that signed up to speak this evening.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Mr. Branham?
Very briefly, if I could, it's nice to see you, Ms. Metz. And just for the body, I have requested that a motion be added to the next meeting's agenda. I believe the clerk has indicated that that would be on the agenda for the June thirteenth meeting. Ms. Metz's attorney did draft some paperwork related to this issue, which we think will resolve, and I've reviewed it with the county attorney's office. And so, I'll just, in advance, I guess I'll ask for the body's support. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item ten, the report of the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just two items. Earlier today, you recognized the Harvest Hope Food Bank. We are currently working with them on the food drive, currently from June first to June twenty-eighth. There are five county drop-off locations, twenty-five-hundred Decker Boulevard, twenty-twenty Hampton Street, four-hundred Powell Road, seventy-five-twenty-five Rock River Road, and seventeen-oh-one Main Street. At the end of this food drive, which we hope many folks will participate in, both our coworkers, employees, families, and friends, we plan to have, again, with Harvest Hope, a, their mobile food market, we're going to partner with them on June the twenty-eighth at the Columbia Place Mall in the Sears parking lot from nine AM to eleven AM, and they're going to distribute fresh produce to the community via their Harvest Hope mobile market. So I just kind of want to put that on your radar, so you'll be aware of that. Wanted to share that information with you as a part of their theme, hunger doesn't take a vacation. The second information I wanted to share with you was for members of council who are a little bit newer, you may not be familiar, but for a couple of years now, we've been working with the voter registrations and elections office to address a concern that they had related to their services and their warehouse and their equipment. And now they're on there, they have a new director, and so that new director has reached out and wants to kind of pick up the ball and kind of address that concern. So for members of the council who hadn't been on the council before, to know that this situation kind of has existed, wanted to kind of bring that to your attention and just be aware that that's something that's, that's kind of going on from a background standpoint. So I wanted to provide you that information because sometimes people believe that you as the body of Richland County Council have jurisdiction over that office, and they, they're not aware that you don't, that there's actually a different process. So there's the Richland County delegation that appoints members to a board, and that board then employs a director who then oversees the local office of Richland County Voter Registrations and Elections. And so, because it says Richland County is the moniker, again, sometimes people get that confused. So if you're getting those kind of questions, I wanted you to know that that is something that we are continuing to work on, and there are some new pieces in place, but that is something that is an awareness that we have. So just wanted to kind of update you all on that, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report, unless you all have any questions that you would like for me to address.
Questions for Mr. Brown regarding his report?
Mr. Brown, well, I have a question. So guess where are we as far as, I guess, assistance or providing assistance to voter registration elections with respect to the storage of these voting machines?
So one of the things that we committed to was providing a long-term solution. That particular solution, we've consistently communicated, the Columbia Place Mall. And so from our perspective, we're looking at, you know, addressing that facility to do that. In the meantime, there was a communication and a request for that office to let us know what they needed, provide us with a budgetary consideration that we would then bring to the council through the budgetary process, so that, you know, you could have the ability to try to address that as you saw fit. And so that's kind of where things stand at. And again, there's been a couple of changes at the leadership level with voter registrations and elections, and so the new director is kind of picking up where the previous director left off and trying to address that at this time.
You or your team received a budgetary request, you know, from voter registration elections about, I guess, you know, funding for the storage of these machines?
So I wouldn't say, not before, you know, recently, we haven't received something through the budget process associated with that. We did recently receive, again, kind of a follow-up saying, we would like to try to move forward with this and some additional information, but, but all that's relatively new.
So if we take a vote tonight on this budget, and we're at the third reading, and you don't have a budget request, well, you have a budget request from them, but is that the budget request does not include, I guess, and ask, if you will, for dollars for the storage of these machines, what does that leave us, you know, come July one?
So what that simply means is that we have to try to find a way to be flexible. There's some information that was recently proposed that may be doable. That's something that we have to kind of work out. We do have a meeting actually scheduled for later on this week. Again, we have, they have a new director, so that individual is kind of coming in, kind of on a tail end. So we're going to be having a meeting, trying to figure out what the request is from his perspective, and see if we can meet that. And it may not affect a budgetary decision for fiscal year 2024, and we hope to know more about that here in the next, you know, two days. But we feel like if what we think that he's asking for is within the realm of what we could potentially do now, that it won't affect 2024 necessarily. It won't affect that budget from a council, a council standpoint. We believe that we can work with their budget to address their temporary storage.
No questions, Ms. Mackey?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Thank you for the update, Administrator Brown. I know many of us have heard about voter registration office and some of the issues they've had for over a year now. And so I'm glad to hear that they do have a new executive director in place. And as you stated, voter registration has the name Richland County Voter Registration, but it is not under our jurisdiction. It is under the state delegation, but we do provide funding. And so I appreciate you keeping us updated. All of council, I feel confident in saying, support voter registration office. We want to fully support to make sure they continue to have successful elections in our county, and that they have all that they need to have to be successful, and we have continued to be here and be available when they are ready and able to make that request. And so I, I'm hearing that there is some movement on that, but to really make it official, I would like to make a motion to direct the county administrator to work with the voter registrations office as soon as possible to resolve this issue.
Second. Properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
It's going to be on my screen.
Motion approved.
All right, and Mr. Brown, that concludes your report, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next item on the agenda is item eleven, report of the clerk of council. Madam Clerk, you recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Not much of a report, but just a reminder that we have a special call meeting scheduled for this upcoming Tuesday, June the thirteenth, and let the public know that we do not have a meeting on June the twentieth, but it is on the thirteenth.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item twelve, report of the chair. This time, the chair does not have any announcements or updates for the body. Item thirteen, approval of consent items. Item thirteen A, Department of Public Works, Engineering Division, Carolina Crossroads, Center Point Road Right-of-Way. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Madam Vice Chair?
I make a motion to approve thirteen A through G.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresa.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Any of these items seem to be reconsidered?
Please, Mr. Chair.
Move to reconsider? I'm assuming all items, size A through G, Ms. Baron?
Yes.
All right.
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
No.
Pew.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston. Teresa. Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English. Newton.
No.
Motion, motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item fourteen, third reading items, fourteen A, in ordinance to raise revenue, make appropriations, and adopt an annual budget fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, rather, for Richland County, South Carolina, for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and end in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, so as to raise revenue, make appropriations, and amend the general fund, millage agencies, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and debt service funds budget for Richland County, South Carolina for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. At this time, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? You recognize Mr. Livingston?
Mr. Chair, if we approve this third reading ordinance right now, I don't see it in place on the agenda for specific items that someone may want to respond to. Am I correct that that's not on the budget anywhere? It, now would be the time to do that? That was a question.
Question, Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, for legal.
All right, Mr. Wright?
Because the last time, I think, we took up the ordinance separate from the actual items that we went through.
Correct, of the actual ordinance. Mr. Wright?
That's correct, Mr. Livingston. Now would be the time to, to address any issues with the budget.
Under, Mr. Livingston, you can tell me if I'm putting words in your mouth. I guess the question is, how do we do it? Or how do we address those issues, considering that previously the vote, you know, we had the ordinance separate from the motions?
Right.
So how, I guess, proceed with the night, Mr. Wright, how do we address those without it coming across as disjointed?
The, a council member would have to make a, the particular, a specific motion regarding the issue that they want to address in the budget.
And I believe Ms. McBride just said an amendment would be the proper mechanism for that.
Well, I don't want to speak for the attorney this time.
You're my attorney as of right now, Ms. McBride. Go ahead, Mr. Wright.
Right, it's, and a motion to amend the suggested budget, basically. So specifically what you want to deal with?
There may be multiple items like that tonight, so, which may result in, you know, potentially, I guess, multiple substitute, substitute motions.
Yes.
Possibly. Ms. Thomas has her finger raised, so Ms. Thomas, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, if it please the council, we do have a motions list that's a part of your, your package there. If it would, if you would like, we can always do the same thing that we've done before and go through the motions list. And if you want to approve them, you can approve them in groups, but we can stop at the, you know, as we work through the list, like last time, we could stop and talk about those that you wanted to.
So what would that look like then, Ms. Thomas? Would it be, for instance, if Mr. Livingston had an item on, on the motions list, which, you know, he wanted to make a motion regarding that, he would just make the motion, it gets seconded?
Yes, sir, and either passes or fails, and then at the end of the evening, we will adopt the budget.
Okay. Recognize, Mr. Livingston?
Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is that we just go through, because some of these, you know, we don't even, do not even go through every item on the agenda, but I would just suggest categories. For example, first on our list is millage agencies. Anybody have a motion regarding those, and then move to the next group. So that way, it may only be one or two items in that group instead of trying to go through the whole list.
Right, and I would think, rather than go through the whole list, if there is a specific item that a council member wants addressed, they could make that motion. And for any items that are unaddressed, I would think the default position is that, oh, you know, it passes, right? So, okay. Well, you recognize, Ms. Mackey?
So we had a motion and a second, we're in discussion, so do we need to withdraw the initial motion at this point and start over in the procedure that you just mentioned?
Mr. Wright?
I think the motion was to accept the ordinance. So I think it would, as far as the specific motions, they are regarding this specific final reading of the ordinance. So I think you just need to make whatever specific motions you need to at this point.
So as part of the discussion, make those motions regarding, make a motion regarding whatever specific motion that the council member wishes to address. And then, once we finish, then we go ahead and take the final vote on the budget ordinance?
Right. Well, no, the final, the final vote would be for the actual entire budget.
The amended, amended.
The amended entire budget.
Right now, we're in discussion on the, you know, on the final ordinance, which is, I think, the matter of the vice chair's question was, do we need to withdraw, I guess, the motion that's been made to approve the ordinance?
I guess to make it simpler, you probably could withdraw it and make the individual motions that you want to make as regarding the different items.
Anchor the motion. Done. At this time, do you wish to withdraw the motion?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chairman. For the view of time, yes, I withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Withdraw the motion. And withdrawing the motion does not require a vote. Correct, Mr. Wright? All right. Okay. So the motion has been withdrawn. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak to the, with the millage agency at this particular point. You may recall the last time, what my concern was, there were two millage agencies who, had they been funded at the mill cap, which is what was recommended by a lot of my colleagues, you may recall, those two agencies' funding would have been less than this in the current year. And I just think that using the mill as a main source of funding their budget is irresponsible, because so many factors affect the mill value for a particular agency, whether they have carrefour funds, where there's some issue before, at expense, that they cover one year, didn't have it covered the next year, whether they receive ERP funds, there are just so many factors. So I think that's just not responsible, we have done it, because it leads to these reductions in one's budget. And again, that was the mental health and Midland's tech. I made a motion referencing both of those. The motion regarding mental health was passed, and so they did not end up on second reading with a loss in revenue from the previous year. That did not happen with Midland's tech. With Midland's tech, what was passed on second reading was still less than their current budget. You know, we make a whole lot of decisions in our county now about what we're trying to do with all the wonderful economic development things and things of that nature. We say to these companies, you know what? We're going to make sure we do some things, improve one's health and so forth, get them workable, we're going to improve education and so forth. And those are two of the main things that we end up reducing in our budget. It doesn't make sense to me. It's not practical, I don't think. So my motion is to fund Midland Technical College at the requested amount. With that said, that would mean that, yes, there will be an increase in your taxes of 80 cents a year if you have a $100,000 home. The average price of a home in our community is $175,000. So you might have to pay a whole $1.40. With a car, I forget what that was, it was so in the cents, but I forgot to calculate. So I just think, I'm one of those who believe that a budget ought to be a responsible budget. A responsible budget means that it's responding to needs. A responsible budget means that taking consideration the impact on our taxpayers. And I think this budget does more than that, and I think it is responsible. I think it's time we look at another way of dealing with our budget, as opposed to just simply saying, whatever the mill is, and not understanding all those factors that affect the mill, and that may have a negative impact on one's budget. So, Mr. Chair, my motion is to fund Midland Technical College at the requested amount.
Second.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I request that we have the auditor give us the exact amounts for the impacts for a home and car?
Auditor, you're recognized.
Point two is what's needed, is that all together? All right. So it's point two mills, two tenths of a mill, I should say. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Councilman. Paul Brawley, Richland County Auditor. I think what Mr. Livingston is referring to is adding an additional two mills, two tenths of a mill, to what has been approved. And that reflects an additional 80 cents on 100,000 owner home, a dollar and 20 cents on a non-occupied home, and 24 additional cents on a $20,000 automobile. Again, that's an estimate at this point, because we don't set the millage until September, October.
The auditor, any additional questions for Auditor Brawley? You recognize, Ms. Baron?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I do want to go on the record to state that I fully support Midland's Technical College and all they're doing in our community, as well as any of the other entity we will vote on tonight as it relates to millage increases. I am just not in support of raising taxes at this time. And so because of that, I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Baron? Do you know comments or, Ms. Mackey?
And I just want to clarify, because I don't know if I heard it, but to clarify, this is related to item five, Midland Technical College, the operating line item. Is that correct, Mr. Livingston? Okay. Thank you.
Livingston?
Let me say too, you know, it's not my concern about raising taxes either. I'm concerned about taxes too. Now, remember, the reason why I say it's important not to do a budget simple by middle just and do about dollar amount is because you don't have to raise taxes. You can take that 80 cents and get it from someone who's, an agency that played a lesser part and role in our community. It's easy to balance a budget without, you know, making adjustments, you see. So, you know, you don't have to raise taxes to do this. You can take some money from somewhere else, or raise taxes.
Baron, and then Ms. Mackey?
So I have two points here. And I think that, Mr. Livingston, you bring up a great point. We can balance our budget using other funds, but that's not the discussion at this point. And I would be, I would welcome that discussion to balance our budget so that we could service not just only Midland's technical colleges, but other entities who are requesting additional funds by which traditionally would come through raising taxes. So that's my statement. And my next question would be for the auditor's office, and that would be that, you know, in our, in our second reading, we had some numbers and some motions that did pass that impacts taxes. And I would, and I don't know if you have this number on hand, but I would like to know, based upon the motions that have passed thus far, what is the total impact of a household moving forward? If we pass this budget as, as recommended, or even with this motion included, a household, how would they be impacted by the dollar amount, a total dollar amount?
Councilwoman Baron, based on what was approved at second reading, I imagine is what you're asking. Is that correct? Based on second reading, there's a $4.40 increase in taxes on 100,000 owner occupied home, $4.40, based on what has been, what was approved at second reading. That reflects on 100,000 non-occupied property, commercial, rental, whatever, that's $6.60. And the effect on a $20,000 automobile is $1.32.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Mr. Livingston's comments regarding just the ability to balance our budget. I think that is a great idea that we all should practice. But I would like, I guess my understanding was his motion was related to raising taxes. So I just want to be clear. If you are suggesting another way, I would like to hear that in the motion. But I was under assumption the motion that we're in discussion on right now is related to raising taxes to fund Midland's Technical College operating.
Livingston?
Okay.
Recognize, Ms. McBride?
Mr. Chair, I just want to reiterate that.
I believe.
80 cents, was it?
80 cents.
80 cents.
On a home, Ms. McBride, and a dollar and 20, that's owner occupied home, a dollar and 29 owner occupied, and I think 24 cents on a vehicle?
So let's just look at the 80 cents to 20 cents. Now, I need everybody to know, just in case you missed it, that's a year. Because oftentimes, people see 80 cents and they look at it as 80 cents a month, because we pay our bills monthly. But that's 80 cents a year. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Ms. McBride, Mr. Pew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally agree with my colleagues. I mean, you know, at this point, we, raising taxes is a bad, is a bad thing right now. And so, for me, we do a great job of bringing economic development into this county. But if we don't have the school systems or the technical schools to support these, these industries that are coming in, then why is economic development at the top of our list of everything that we do? And so those are some of the things we need to look at. I mean, I'm not in favor of raising taxes either. But at the same time, we need to make sensible decisions when it comes to making decisions for our constituents and the people that we support in Richland County. And again, if our technical schools aren't thriving, and our local school districts aren't thriving, where are we going to get the workforce from to support all this great economic development that we're bringing into Richland County? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pew. Additional questions or discussion on this item? All right. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Ms. McBride? You're recognized.
Chair, when I left last week, I went home and I thought about the whole process. And I'm more or less a processor. And I've never really voted on, on a budget without actually looking at the impact. What happens if we don't fund this amount? In the discussion last week, we didn't talk about the impact. We only talked about one impact, and that was the financial impact. But see, a budget is more than just money. A budget is, what is it doing to serve the people of Richland County? How is it helping Richland County? So you can't just look at a dollar, $2 here, and not think of what this impact would be. So I think the millage agencies are so important. And most of them are necessary. But we have some that are essential, such as our educational programs. They are essential to our economy, our livelihood, the success of Richland County. We cannot do without our educational programs. Our mental health program, it's essential now. And the other programs are good. They're good resources. So as I thought about it, I looked and I said, on the most essential, the programs that are needed the most, that we cannot live in Richland County with, we're not funding them at the level that the people that represent the programs, who know the programs, have requested. And so then I thought about, I didn't go in and look at the impact. What is the impact if we don't fund the requested amount from District One? And so I actually called, Mr. Chair, I called the school district, because I really didn't know the impact of not funding any of the programs that we are funding. I just voted. And I don't vote like that, if you know how I vote. I have lots of questions. And when I, and I voted like that, it troubled me. So I talked to District One, and I don't know whether it's appropriate to, Mr. Chair, to get the impact from them, or is that appropriate? If not, I'll go on.
At this time.
Okay, thank you.
No, ma'am, only because we're in discussion now.
So anyway, the, the problem would be that they are 6.6 million short if we do not fund them at the cap. That means many of those programs will be impacted. They have to figure out which ones and how much. And we just left COVID. We're just getting out of COVID. Our kids are already behind from COVID. We're trying to catch up. We don't have enough teachers. We don't have enough staff. We need to do everything possible to service our kids, to make sure they get a quality education, not a minimally adequate education. So I ask you, that I looked at the budget, and I don't know the overall impact on the taxes, Mr. Brawley. If we, if we did Richland District One at the cap, I don't know the overall impact. Do you have that? Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Brawley.
If we, Ms. McBride, if we fund District One at the cap, the impact on a 100,000 owner occupied home?
Yes, sir.
Is zero, of course, because they don't pay taxes. But on the non-occupied properties, it would be $129.60. On a $20,000 vehicle, it would be $25.92.
Okay, help me understand the zero now.
Owner occupied property don't pay school operating taxes.
Okay.
Act the idiot.
Okay, so that's zero.
Correct.
And then the other taxes would be, who pays the other taxes?
Non-occupied businesses, and of course, car taxes.
Hey, so that's not impacting our constituents. Then I looked at the business debt. Then I looked at, there are over 20-some thousand, maybe 22,000 students in District One that will be impacted by us not funding this program. 90% of those are children of color. Another 80% are underserved. They own food, on meals plans, free meals. They're economically deprived. These are the students that will be impacted if we just looked at what millage rates, and then there's no impact. Just remember what Mr. Brawley just said, factual information. So my motion is to approve the budget for District One at the cap. Second.
Properly, second. Any discussion? You recognize, Ms. Baron? Mr. Brawley, I think you may want to remain at the podium.
Both of them.
This discussion's not over.
Mr. Chair?
You recognize, Mr. Deschondi?
District One is not asking the mill cap. They're asking in between mill and no mill. So it's, it's not really the full mill cap increase. It's around 10 mill, but we can confirm that with Mr. Brawley.
That's even better. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You may have to amend.
Do I need to amend? How can I amend it to fit the budget request?
Yeah, you can amend to the, approve to the agency's budget request.
Okay, so I move for the agency's budget request. Okay, thank you.
Properly, second. Okay, discussion. So, Ms. Baron, you're recognized.
So I'm not going to repeat what I stated earlier, but what I will say is, Mr. Livingston said something that really struck me. And Ms. McBride, she and I agree on a lot of things, and we agree on this item. Whereas, as being in education, I fully support funding not just Richland One, Richland Two, Richland, Lexington, Five, all of those. My concern, as I previously stated, we're not at the My concern, as I previously stated, we're not at the place, if we were at the place to have a discussion, and perhaps we need to have a discussion about how do we bu- balance our budget so that it's not impacting households? I, I really don't care if it's twelve cents or twenty-five hundred dollars. If, to the family that does not have that twelve cents that Ms. McBride is talking about, it, that's a challenge. That is a challenge. So I know this is not the time, but since we brought it up, I want us to keep it before us as a body to come, perhaps we should charge our administration on how can we look at our, our budget process differently so that we can get the funds in the hands of the people who need it without negatively impacting people's homes financially? And so I'm, I'm fully in support of that, but because I, I, I try to, I err on the side of being consistent in my votes and, and my words and in my deed, you know, I'm, I'm not going to jump the ship because Ms. McBride really hit all my heartstrings. She did. And, but at the same time, I'm just charging us, I, Mr. Livingston said it, it's time for us to look at how we do business differently. Thank you.
Uh, you recognize Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reach out to some of the village, uh, agency staff that's here and ask them, please, to communicate better with Richland County Council on some of these requests. We are not finding out this information until the very last minute. Our own Chairman Walker brought that up several weeks ago. I mean, y'all are asking us to approve these budget increases, and we're not getting, getting the information. Not one person has called me. Not one person has sent me any information other than what I get through county staff. Surely, y'all have the staff and your own agencies to get us the information. You don't have to rely on the staff down here at 2020 Hampton. You can get it to us directly. Mail it to our house. Email it to us directly. I'm happy to accept it. But I think y'all would have a better job of selling your ideas and your wants and your needs and your funding to county council if you just communicate on a better basis with us directly. That's all I'm going to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. The additional, uh, Ms. English?
I just want.
And then Mr. Livingston?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. I just want to be clear on the impact, and Mr. Brawley, you can help me if you will. I'm just, um, basic. Most homes are a hundred and fifty thousand, so I take that one twenty-nine and that, and then kind of divide that in half and add the two together. And the same with the, um, a car at twenty thousand, if it's a forty thousand dollar car. And I come up with fifty-one eighty-four, and I add those together, then I'm getting about three hundred, um, dollars per household, per year. You said per hundred thousand, right?
Right, but that was at the cap. So the numbers changed as a result of the actual agency's request.
Okay.
Uh, and, and that changes a ten mil difference at this point.
Okay.
Uh, instead of, I think it was fifteen, oh, no, actually twenty, it, it was more than fifteen.
I guess the question, Mr. Brawley, probably at this point, is, you know, what is the impact on the tax bill, uh, based on Richland One's, uh, request?
On Richland One's request as it stands now, it would be estimated at a ten mil difference. Uh, again, no impact on an owner occupied home.
Dollar amount, uh, Mr., um, Mr., uh, auditor.
I'm sorry?
The, the dollar amount, what would be the dollar amount?
Okay. The dollar amount for a hundred thousand dollar, non-owner occupied home would be sixty dollars. Uh, on a twenty thousand dollar automobile, it would be twelve dollars. Of course, again, nothing on an owner occupied home because that's taken care of through Act 388.
Just declared twenty thousand dollar vehicle, Mr. Brawley, right?
Correct.
Not a home.
Right, twenty thousand dollar vehicle.
Vehicle, okay. Question, uh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just doing the math. So if my vehicle is valued at forty thousand or sixty dol- sixty thousand, for every twenty thousand, that is twelve dollars.
That's correct.
Okay. And the same with, um, the house. For every hundred thousand, that's sixty, sixty dollars.
That's correct. Two hundred thousand would be a hundred and twenty.
Commercial.
A hundred and fifty thousand would be ninety.
Well, if, if I may just chime in for a second, um, Mr. Auditor, when you say not owner occupied, I think some of my colleagues are thinking that is strictly commercial, but that also is someone who may own a second home.
That's correct.
Right? Because I may have a house that I own, but I'm renting it out. And so that's an increase in the tax bill and which ult- which usually may result in the owner of that home passing the cost off to the tenant. So.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Brawley, thank you, Mr.
Uh, still, Livingston?
I just want to try to get my numbers straight here. The request from, from Richland One was the two-hundred-sixty-one million, six-hundred-and-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eight dollars. Is that, is that the actual request?
What I have before me is two-hundred-and-sixty-one million, seven-hundred-and-ten thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Is that? That's correct. Yes.
What, 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 what is the difference between the amount requested and the actual, um, no-mill amount? Is that six million that was referred to, being referred to?
It's around six-point-six million.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Recognize, uh, Ms. English?
Is how much above last year's budget? I'm just totally confused.
Fifteen, fifteen million, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars above.
Thank you.
We're fifteen million, two-hundred-and-ninety thousand. Additional questions?
I'm still figuring.
Mr. Livingston, you still?
Can someone tell me the difference between, um, if, if you took half of the six-point-three, six-point-six million, three-point-three million from the requested amount? What would it be?
Are you saying the, the diff, uh, the half point between the no-mill and the requested amount?
Yes, right.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's a three-point-three million, um, basically more than, so it's around two-hundred-and-fifty-seven and, or maybe two-hundred-and-fifty-five millions, around that.
Oh, but that amount would be?
Exactly, I, I'll give you the exact amount, one minute. So it will be two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, three-hundred and forty-two dollars.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars.
That's right.
I'd like to make a substitute motion for two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars for, um, Richland One general operation budget.
Second.
Properly, second, any discussion?
Um, Mr. Chair?
You recognize Ms. Barron?
Could I have the motion repeated? I, I didn't hear it.
The amount was two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-two, um, dollars.
In other words, the motion is, uh, is to meet the school district, I guess, uh, try to, uh, meet them halfway with respect to the six million, six-point-seven million. Yeah, that's the, that's the intent of the motion. Uh, you recognize Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. Can you repeat again what the impact is?
Sure.
Based off his new recommended numbers?
Based off, quickly telling you, it probably would be a five-mill impact, which would be half of the ten mills that we talked about. Uh, so a five-mill impact on a hundred thousand non-owner occupied is thirty dollars, six dollars for a twenty thousand dollar automobile.
I was forgetting those, those amounts in half too, yeah.
Thank you.
Additional discussion or questions regarding Mr. Livingston's motion? I share, uh, Ms. McBride's, um, sentiments about our village agencies. Certainly, I'll share her sentiments when it comes to public education. You know, I myself am a product of public school, and I'm also a graduate or an alum of Richland School District One. And Richland One holds a special, you know, place in, in my heart. It's a huge part of who I am. And also, recognize just how essential all of our village agencies are. And, you know, I'm not a no-tax guy, no new-tax guy. But I'm also not a spinthrift either. And when I look at, um, you know, our budget, or I should say, the people's budget, you know, I treat it as if it's my own. And I try to reconcile, you know, the needs, you know, of our village agencies, all who provide, uh, an invaluable service to the residents of Richland County. But I try to reconcile those needs with the bandwidth or the capacity of our residents, you know, to absorb a tax hike. You know, that is the, uh, that is the analysis, you know, for me. I don't have an ideological bent, uh, left or right, you know, when it comes to taxes. It's just having a budget that's responsible, having a budget that is sensible. I have had conversations with my friends, and yes, I call them friends, um, because that's how I view them, not just colleagues, but friends of mine, uh, on the school board about this. We've had some very candid conversations, and let me just say, I don't doubt the sincerity of the request. It's my understanding that the reason the request has been made is because there have been some mandates that have come down from the state. Seems like there's this pattern of unfunded mandates, uh, that come from, you know, our state government or the General Assembly. No, I'm not calling anyone out, it's just a fact, at least that's what's been shared with me, um, that are imposed on our school districts. And then you got Act 388, which really hamstrings our school districts when it comes to generating, um, the revenue that's necessary to provide the services. So in this instance, the mandate that's coming from state government, and then they're left coming to county council to ask us, you know, to raise taxes. And something about that is just, you know, unfair and almost unconscionable, uh, to me. And so I will be voting no on this tonight, but it's not a, it's not a no vote against the school district. It's not. When the media reached out to me about this, uh, about Richland One specifically, uh, you know, the question that was posed to me was, well, why did you vote against Richland One's request? And it was not a vote against Richland One. It's a vote for Richland One. Granted, with, I'm not going to vote in favor of the request, but I am voting, uh, to provide the additional funding, uh, for the school district. If you look at the budget from last year, what was approved, it was two-hundred-and-thirty-nine million. With an increase in the value of the mill, uh, a no-mill increase will result in two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-four million, rather, nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand. That is a fifteen million dollar, uh, increase in revenue or in the budget for the school district from last year. And that is coming from county council. So we are, I believe, rising to the challenge. That is more than meeting the request, you know, halfway. That's nearly seventy-five percent. And I would, you know, challenge the General Assembly to make up the difference. If you're going to have these mandates that you impose, I think it's unfair to then, you know, pass the buck down to local government and ask us to make up the difference and saddle the taxpayers with an increase in the tax bill for a mandate that you passed that you just refuse to fund. And then you put our friends on school board in a difficult position of having to come to us and ask for a tax hike. So I want everyone out there to know, I am a huge proponent of public education. My vote tonight, I believe, uh, symbolizes that support of public education. You know, but I won't be able to, uh, my vote would not be, perhaps it doesn't meet the request of the school district, but it surely increases significantly the amount of revenue that they received, uh, last year. So thanks, everybody, for indulging me. Any additional discussion or questions? You recognize, Mr. Brenham?
I was just going to say, uh, as a fellow graduate of Lower Richland High School, I agree wholeheartedly with what the chair just said. I don't know that much about any sort of, uh, unfunded state mandates because, um, I too have not been contacted by anybody at any school district in Richland County. Thank you.
No comments, questions, discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, uh, take the vote.
Can we repeat the motion that we're voting on? I know it changed, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I believe, Mrs., Mrs., your motion was to, um, wasn't the full request?
Two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, and I don't have the before.
What was that? I believe the auditor had the number, or maybe Mr. Deschondi had the number.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars.
And, um, Mr. Livingston?
Two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, three-hundred. Three-hundred thousand, four, forty-two dollars.
Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, take the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracy?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion fails.
All right. I believe that brings us back to the, uh, the original motion, which was, uh, the no-mill increase. Now, that passed at the, um, previous meeting, so is it necessary to vote on that again, Mr.?
Excuse me?
You recognize, uh, Ms. McBride?
So, Mr. Livingston made a substitute motion?
He did, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that canceled out my initial, Mr. Chair?
Yes, it's subs- it was substituted for your motion.
I thought he did. You made a substitute, not an amended.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Actually, you did amend it, but then he made a substitute motion.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman? Uh, you recognize, Mr. Weaver?
Can I just go ahead and bring back my original motion that passed at second reading, then the two-hundred-and-fifty-four?
Was the no-mill increase?
Million, yes, sir, for Richland One.
Uh, you recognize, Mr. Wright?
Mr. Chair, uh, for that particular one, you don't have to because it's, it's already, it would have been there.
It's okay. Thank you.
Got it. All right. Okay, so any additional, you know, items or motions we want to take up on the motions list? No, we're just, if you have one specifically, you don't have to go by category, and we're not going to vote on every one because the, uh, what's reflected is what has passed, but if you have something that you want to reconsider, if you will, or bring back to the body's attention, you can certainly highlight that and we can discuss it again.
Mr. Chair?
You recognize, uh, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. I would like to, uh, look at amending motion sixty-one A. In light of, uh, information that we have received today that, um, is related to the voter registration and elections office and their need to be able to have, um, adequate storage and facilities and us not knowing exactly that full cost, I would like to look at amending the dollar amount, um, for this category to make sure that we do have money available. Just, I guess, to remind all of my colleagues with where we are now, we are at the max point of our, um, general fund, I guess, what is the right word I'm looking for here? Fund balance, thank you. At our percentage, meaning that if we go over using any more additional funds, that we are, credit rating will be at risk, therefore putting us at risk to borrow, which we all know, going forward in this next year, we have many, many capital improvement projects that we will need to borrow for to execute. And so to make sure that we can still do all the things that we plan, but then also fulfill our obligations to voter registration office, I would like to amend, uh, sixty-one A and have that amount be set aside for the administrator to use towards the voter registration and elections commission as needed as he works with them.
Second?
Second.
Properly, second, discussion, Ms. Tracy?
Just to be clear, we're, so we're just, this is a motion just to repurpose those funds?
Correct, so that they are available for him to use at voter registration as something we have to do.
Thank you.
English, and then Mr. Brenham, and then Ms. Barron, and then Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Thank you also, woman Mackey. I had a discussion with Sheriff Lot and just shared these sentiments. I just want everyone to know for the record how hard it was for us to get our AAA rating back. And we've been working diligently over the past few years to get that. And when I shared that with him, he clearly understood that we'll be working towards finding additional revenue and that we're on the same page, that his deputies are invaluable as well as all 911 workers. And just wanted to echo those sentiments and thank you for this. And, Mr. Branham, I know your heart is in the right place, but that general fund balance has been hard to get back. And so I just wanted to go on the record saying that.
Thank you, Ms. English. Mr. Branham, Ms. Baron, and then Mr. Weaver.
Oh, just clarification. So it's to take every penny that was passed in the last meeting, $464,000 towards starting pay for those entry-level positions with the sheriff's department, and put it in a, in a fund just in case it's requested by voter registration to store voting machines? Is that basically it?
Have you recognized?
Miss Mackey?
So I think two points to clarify. When we say the $464,000 was for deputy starting pay, I understand that was the intent of the motion. I don't think we actually ever got a specific on how many or what that amount would be. But the amount of money, yes, I'm asking that we do set it aside so that the administrator has access to work with voter registration to do something that we have to do. There is no if, ands, or buts. We do have to work with them to provide a place. And we need to make sure we have the funds available because at this point, we don't without going over. So.
Can I just respond to that?
You may, Mr. Branham.
I don't, I don't have any information other than some very vague references made by the administrator today during his report about a need or a mandate to do in specific. For me to totally change course on, you know, something that was well-vetted, I felt like through discussion and debate last time, you know, that won't be me. Thanks.
Ms. Mackey, then Ms. Baron, then Mr. Weaver, and then Ms. McBride.
And, Mr. Branham, I do want to point out, you are correct. We don't have all the specifics, and that is because voter registration office did not do that. So you are correct. That is not any fault of our administrator or us. The reality is voter registration should have done this. They should have done the due diligence. But at the end of the day, the financial responsibility is on us. And so at some point, I think we have to make sure that when they do come back to us, that we have the funds. We have to be proactive in an area where they have not been. But you are correct. They have not done what they needed to do. But I want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves, our constituents, in a bad spot when they do finally come to do what they need to do.
Baron, Mr. Weaver, and then Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think that we do need to do something to assist voter registration. I'm just concerned it's almost like we're giving them a blank check, you know, except it does, it's not blank. We're just saying, hey, you got $400-plus thousand. You know, I know if I had, if I was the executive director and I'm hearing this conversation, I would go crunching numbers and go looking and go shopping. It's like when I tell my kids, you got $200 for some shoes, you better believe they're gonna spend every bit of that $200. And because, and I get it, we had a new director and we, this, we're obligated, obligated to do this. I, I get all of that. But we were setting aside funds on, on something that's not concrete right now. It could very well be that it's this time next year that the election commission finally decides what it is they need. And whereas we have our deputies, we know what they need. And we know this is not enough money. We know that. But I just, I just kind of, I'm grappling with the fact that, you know, we're just kind of taking it away from, from a group that we know that there is a need there and it's a need over here. But they don't know what they want. They don't know what they need. But we're just gonna, we're gonna set it aside and say, you know, when you ready, we got you. And, and we made budget amendments and moved money around and made things happen without impacting our overall bottom line. Is it an uncomfortable thing to do? Is it a let's make a deal? Sure it is. But is that, you know, we've done it before? It's not ideal. But I just gotta, I don't know. It just gives me some, a little heartburn to be able to, to take it away from people I know who are out there doing the job day in and day out and sitting it aside and it's not doing anything for us. That's like taking the money out the bank and it's not getting an invest, it's not getting any interest on it. Thank you. I'm done.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Can I just clarify?
Ms. Mackey, and then Ms. McBride, and then Mr. Weaver.
And I, I know other people want to talk. I do want to just clarify. My motion was to not give them the money. My motion is to set aside for the administrator to have access to money. We would still have to approve anything. And so that was my motion. I want to be clear, it's not to give them a blank check. It is not to say they, but it is to set it aside because there is nothing else to set aside right now. And the administrator would still have access to it. So I just want to make that clear.
McBride, and then Mr. Weaver.
Yes, I hate to go back through this fund, fund balance stuff. That's where we at. I know, because some people don't get it. That's why I hate to go through it. But anyway, Mr. Deschondes. So with the $465,000 I have or much is, where are we with the fund balance?
So we'll be using 5.948,460 with that $464,000 in the second reading. So that we'll be using 5.9 million around.
Where, percentage-wise?
The percentage-wise, we are around 22.4%.
So we are still within the appropriate range that is fiscably, fiscally acceptable. Yes, we are.
Yes, like about 20%.
Yes.
Just, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify. I just wanted to correct you because we are.
Well, no, I just want to clarify because if that's what you heard, that is not what, so I want to clarify.
Well, we need the clarification.
We do. Because I usually wouldn't interrupt you, but I want clarification. So the clarification, and what I understand is the way that we have operated to maintain our AAA credit rating, which, mind you, is very rare across the U.S., not just South Carolina, but the United States of America. And in order to maintain that, we have set for ourselves the 22%, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, you could go below that legally. You could. But that impacts the good rating we have. So I think both things are true. But I would like to keep the extremely good AAA credit rating that we have. Interest rates matter. We know that. We talked about capital improvement projects that we have coming up. And so staying at that 22% keeps us with the good rating as we go to borrow and the interest rate and the money that we're gonna have to pay back. So we could go below, but then you lose, you risk your good credit rating and then you have higher interest rates.
Okay, now my turn.
Recognize, Ms. McBride?
Okay, so. I've lived, I've been with this fund balance for years now. And based on it, and Richland County has AAA rating and has had AAA rating for years. We have been very, very fiscally responsible. The, the range was to stay within that AAA rating was 21 through 24%. Unless something has changed, that used to be the range. It was like 21 through 24%. But even now, we're still at the 22%.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Question, Ms. McBride?
Yeah, that's a question.
All right, Ms. Thomas?
Well, it's a statement and a question.
Okay.
No, ma'am, the actual policy is between 20 and 35%.
Okay, good.
So we're down close to the very threshold. If there were to be an emergency and we go below that 20% for something to happen within the county, we would have no cushion. So we have always tried to stay above 22%, 22 and a half percent, actually, when we're working with the budgets, and have actually always stayed closer to the 24. So this takes it down to the point where there is a very minimal amount left to still stay within fund balance. And that is something that's critical when your credit agencies start looking at valuing your offerings.
And I don't, Mr. Chair. I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I'm just saying that the numbers, and we could take those numbers and look at them in many different ways, was still the 22, was still within the 20%. And I know that brings us real close to the edge. But we are not quite there because we're still at the 22%. So I mean, that's your position and that's mine.
That's mine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Weaver?
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I'll just echo everything my colleague, Ms. Baron, said. We know the needs in the sheriff's department. That need is clearly understood. The money we're taking back and putting in fund balance, sure, the money may sit there, but we've already pledged that in second reading to go to the sheriff's department. I, I think that is our priority and I think we need to stick with what we voted on at second reading.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Wright?
And here y'all discussing, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what that 464 actually means for the deputies. And from my understanding from finances, that that's a $767 a year increase for a deputy. So that's the difference, $767 for a year for, for the $464,000.
I understand. And also, I think after tonight, that part of this year's budget is a 4% COLA across the board, right, Mr. Brown? For all county employees? Yes, sir. We did discuss that, Mr. Chair. 4% COLA. And so if this budget passes tonight, I'm optimistic it will, that's a 4% cost of living adjustment that will go into effect on July 1. Will not go into effect on July 1? Ms. Thomas?
No, sir, because we do also fund longevity pay this year, which will be funded in July of this year. This would not go into effect until later in August.
Okay, so the longevity pay goes into effect when?
That would be paid out in July. I believe it's the last check in July.
And then the COLA goes into effect?
It would be probably the second payroll in August.
Second payroll in August, so about a month off.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it sounds like to me help is on the way. You know, for those who are, who have, I guess, reservations about the motion and, and concerns that this would be taken away from the sheriff's department, relief seems to be right around the corner. In addition to the comp study, that I believe those findings, once administration has met with the various department heads, whatever, you know, the results are for an increase in pay, those findings will be implemented at the first of January. So again, this council is proactive. We are taking action to address the needs of not just the sheriff's department, but all of our county agencies and departments. So, Ms. English?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is just for me, a clarification from, I guess, Attorney Wright or Mr. Brown. This $464,000, would this be a yearly thing that we have to make sure that the sheriff's department gets, goes into their budget and stays there?
Or maybe that's a question for Mr. Wright?
I'll, I'll address it from a payroll perspective. So any increase that would go to the payroll would be something that would be a reoccurring expense, which is a separate question, I think, specifically as it relates to this specific pot of money. But whatever dollars are added to an individual salary will be on their salary until they're no longer employed by the county, whether through retirement or any other reason they choose to not be here.
Wright? I'm sorry, Ms. English?
But the specific sheriff's department budget, not payroll, but the budget for the sheriff's department?
He's referring to sheriff's, the payroll there. That's who he's referring to.
Yes, ma'am, I'm referring to the deputies, the individual personnel who would receive those funds that would be specifically aligned with that department's budget. So it would ultimately be the sheriff's department.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Wright?
And specifically for sheriff's deputies, you are required to fund them. Once you have the positions, you can't take them away. So you, as far as salary-wise, you have to fund the positions to make sure they keep them. So once you have them, you, they're there forever. Unless the sheriff voluntarily decreases it.
Mr.?
Mr. Wright, you may have answered my question, but that $464,000, what will it do for each deputy?
it do for each deputy? You said it can, would each one's paid by, what, $700?
$767.
Mr. Chair? Recognize, Mr. Brown?
Where's this number coming from?
Ms. Thomas?
Okay.
There were 464 deputies in the classes of officers that you spoke about, which were not just entry-level officers. When you take that and you divide that up, that's $1,000. The cost of carrying those for benefits and retirement, which law enforcement retirement is very expensive, comes out right at 1.3, at 30%. So, you'd have to multiply your increase by 1.3 to get back, and that's how you get back to your $1,000, basically.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to get the numbers from the numbers people.
No problem.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No problem.
Back to Mr. Livingston? Okay.
Yeah, I kind of assumed that that was mainly for beginning deputies and so forth. I didn't realize it was for all the different levels, but okay.
Any additional questions or?
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm not, this is not a takeaway, you know, from the sheriff at all. The sheriff and his deputies know, I fully support, and I believe that through this budget process, you know, we and staff have worked with the Sheriff's Department, all our departments, to make sure that we are fulfilling ask and really giving investments to county employees. Chairman Walker mentioned the 4% increase, the longevity pay. We're working on a compensation study for all of county employees to go into effect, and so, all of these things are pouring into the Sheriff's Department as well as all county departments. And so, this is by no means trying to take away anything from the Sheriff's Department. This is really looking at our budget and being responsible and evaluating all the responsibilities that we have. And whether we, you know, like it or not, the voter registration office is a responsibility that we do have. And so, what I am trying to do is be proactive in our thinking, planning ahead. We just had a huge conversation about millage agencies and folks, you know, having feelings about not increasing taxes and what it does to voters, and I think we should have those same feelings and conversations as we look at this pot of money, our wallet, that we're responsible for budgeting for our county departments, right? We need to be just as responsible with those funds, and so, all I'm proactively looking at is saying, where can we look at what we have to plan for another need that we know right now is coming? And that's literally all I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to take away from anyone, but I'm also trying to make sure that we maintain a reasonable budget. For many of us, we've heard about the AAA rating that we've had for years, and I know many of us on this council have been here for several years and have worked very hard to really, really look at our budget, to make sure that we're aligning how we're spending, that we're being transparent with our spending, and we've done all that to get to the place that we're at right now. And to all of a sudden say, well, now, let's go beyond the 22% that we've never done before. We've actually always been at 24, now we're at 22, and now we're saying, well, it doesn't matter, let's keep going. To me, that's not the direction this council has been going, and why would we change back now? And so, all I'm saying is, please consider the responsibilities that we have at hand and think about those things now. That's all I'm suggesting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. McBride?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Richland County has been very responsible and accountable, and I think as my colleagues from the past and now try to be. I would never suggest anything that would be detrimental to the county, and I'm not sure about where people are getting information from, but I do know from the past about the fund reserve, and I do know that we would not vote on it if it were not responsible, we were not being responsible. So, I don't know where that information came from, but the 21%, the 22% where we are now is very responsible. The other part, I do hope that we look at all issues. We just passed, we just denied school District 1 funding at the cap to ensure that all kids are educated. We must be responsible at all areas. We can't pick and choose, and seem like that is occurring, we're picking and choosing what is important, but in the end, what matters is what full council votes on, and that's what passes. So, there are some that say this is not as important as others, but what the full council says, that's what matters. It doesn't mean that I'm right, or whether the people that are voting against what I'm saying is right, it's just that the majority rules. So, at this point, I think that the council will make up this decision, and once it's made, then we'll have to follow that decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. All right, any additional comments or questions? All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote. I'm sorry, Councilman Pugh?
Repeat the motion, please.
Madam Vice Chair, will you restate your motion?
Okay, so, the motion, original motion was to amend 61A to set aside those funds for the county administrator to work with, to meet the needs for the voter registration and election commission office.
Seconded, we've already had discussion. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion fails.
All right, any additional items on the agenda, or, I'm sorry, any additional motions? You recognize, Ms. Barron?
Thank you. I'd like to bring a motion that came out of the Coronavirus Ad-Hoc Committee, and it's a recommendation, however, because it does impact our '23, '24 budget, I'd like to make the recommendation here, and that's to provide up to $400,000 to the Community Impact Committee to be set aside for nonprofits in the community, in the community impact grant process. Those nonprofits listed on the FY '23, '24 budget motion list will be invited to apply and participate in that process.
I know it's a motion, but is that, would that be appropriate at this time, Mr. Wright? I mean, I know it's, to Ms. Barron's point, it impacts, impacts the budget, but I also know that we, on the agenda tonight, under the report of the Coronavirus Ad-Hoc Committee, deals with unallocated funds, so, I don't know if...
It depends, if it's, if it's going to affect the budget, since this is the third reading, whatever is going to affect with the budget has to be dealt with. So, that, if it, that depends on if it's going to affect this budget.
ARPA dollars, I'm, I guess, the question is, would it impact the budget? Because the request for, well, the motion from Ms. Barron is for those dollars to go to the Corona, to the Community Impact Grants Committee.
Recognize, Mr.? Mr. Wright, and then, go ahead, and then, Mr. Livingston.
Yes, basically, like I said, it depends on whether those ARPA funds or whatever funds you're using is going to affect this fiscal year's budget. So, if it's separated, it doesn't have to be done now, but if it's something that's going to affect it, then it does need to be done now.
One more second, Ms. Barron.
I would argue that it would be inappropriate for this to be a part of the budget ordinance, because the budget ordinance has had two readings. You can't bring anything in and get a, and not only get a third reading on it. I think what might be most appropriate is for us to move forward with first reading on this, and move forward that way, separate of the budget. Because if, see, if that was the case, then all of us can come up with something to add to the budget for third reading, which is not really practical. So, I think the appropriate thing, because I do support it, is to move forward with first reading tonight, and it has taken a different track. And that's my ruling, I understand the Robert rules, so I'll quit.
What, Ms. Livingston, you say it would have to, what, Ms. Livingston, you say it would have to be a first reading, right? But I believe Ms. Barron says it's a recommendation coming from the committee, but she is offering it as a motion, so. Am I interpreting your?
Well, then, I'm just saying, it'd be separate of, it'd have to be separate of the budget ordinance, is all I'm saying.
So, if I may, in our committee meeting, it was recommended by legal and administration to bring it during this portion, and that's why I'm bringing it forward during this time, because these, this $400,000 is going to the Community Impact Grants Committee to be a part of their, the grant cycle that is upcoming July 1. And so, that's why it's before this body now, because it is directly impacting the '23, '24 budget cycle. That's, that's why it's before, and that's the only reason why I brought it, is because I was, I was, I'm gonna say told.
Ms. Mackey?
I do, Ms. Livingston, I understand what you're saying, but I do want to point out, during our second reading of the budget, there was a discussion related to unallocated ARPA funds. And I don't know if you recall, there was a motion made, we went back and forth, we were going to use ARPA funds, and then it was stated by the body that we needed to have that come from committee before we made a decision. So, it was discussed, and we as a body sent it back to committee for them to meet and come back to us, because we didn't want to act on the motion to use ARPA funds at times. So, I do feel like it was discussed in the second reading, and it is proper to bring it back, because that's the whole reason the committee went and did it, is because we said it to in the second reading.
Mr. Chair, but it did get a first and second reading through the budget ordinance process, and what I'm saying is, I mean, we can do it, but I'm just simply saying, and I think a motion might be inappropriate, just simply say, you know, let's add, you know, add the grant stuff to the budget cycle or whatever, but to say it's a part of the budget ordinance is what I'm saying, it's not appropriate.
You're saying just do it separately?
It can be done separate, but it's not, keep in mind, if you did that, like I said, you could come up with all kinds of things and add a third reading, that haven't had a first or second reading.
Mr. Pugh, and then, I'm gonna hear from Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just from my understanding of Robert's rules, I would think that it would, that it would be appropriate for it to come when Ms. Barron gives her report as a, as a recommendation from the committee. Just my thoughts.
Wright, and Mr. Wright do this for me, or for us. Give us some guidance, because I want to move on from this item. We got us, we still have a pretty, several items left on the agenda tonight, so, give us some guidance.
I think that with, because it's, the ARPA funds is potentially something that would increase or impact the Community Impact Grants budget, it would have to be dealt with in the full budget, because if you do, if you pass the budget, it's closed, the third is third reading, and so, that would be completely separate. So, if you want to actually impact the impact grants budget, it has to be done now.
Has to be done now?
Yes.
All right. Because it has to be done now, so, Ms. Barron, the motion's may, has Ms. Barron's motion been seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved to properly seconded. Any discussion? Is there any discussion?
All the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Better than that, or the same, rather, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
There you go.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Keep going down the list. Any other motions or items on the motions list that we need to take up? Going once?
I've moved that we adopt the audits, urban audits as amended.
Hold a second, just move it a second. Go ahead, somebody moves a second.
Second.
All right, discussion. No, no, it wasn't, no, no. Mr. Brown, I have a question. I'm looking at, this is page 227 of the agenda, and it has to do with curbside collection. And maybe this is probably a question for Director Maloney or Mr. Ansel, but I see the curbside collection fee is 350.57, and it says a current rate increased by 5%. Is that the 368.10? Would that be accurate?
I'd see him.
Yeah, Mr. Ansel, so, is it 350.57? Is that the recommended rate, or is the 5% increase reflected in the 368.10?
The 5% increase is reflected in the 368.
All right, so, here's my question. So, I talked with someone earlier today who lives in Lexington County, and their curbside collection bill is 225, but in Lexington, I'm told that the curbside collection fee doesn't appear on their tax bill. I think they deal directly, well, the resident deals directly with the vendor, whereas here, the county, we deal directly, we as an county that is, deal directly with the vendor, but yet our rate or rates are higher than St. Lexington County. Can you speak to that, or Director Maloney speak to that, asking, I guess, why would we have that much of a disparity in rates paid by Richland County residents versus Lexington residents when we are actually, you know, contracting out with vendors? I would think that it would be less expensive if we've got, you know, the county, you know, involved and, you know, seeking out the service on behalf of our residents. So, could you address that?
Yes, sir, I can. Yeah, it has everything to do with the number of services provided for that monthly or yearly rate. In Richland County, we are providing four pickup services. You have your curbside garbage pickup weekly, you have your recycle bi-weekly, you have yard waste weekly, and you have bulk collections by appointment. If you will look at the neighboring county and other counties, they are offering less services for that amount, and in some counties, they even have a, what they call an urban and a rural rate. And a rural rate typically will get you one service, which is a garbage pickup. In Richland County, we provide all four services across the entire unincorporated portion of the county for the same rate.
Mr. Chairman? You recognize Director Maloney? I'm sorry, Director Maloney, before you go, Mr. Livingston?
I just wanted to point out that, too, I've had some conversations with folks in Lexington County and other places, too. The problem is, as you mentioned, less service, but the big problem is, they pay directly to the collector, and what that mean is, they may or may not pay, and they get cut off and so forth, so you got trash everywhere because you don't have a consistent trash system. So, it drives folks crazy in counties like that. A lot of them tried that model change because of that. So, be careful what you ask for.
Not asking for it, just inquiring, that's all. Director Maloney?
Yes, sir, just to add a little, one bit to Lexington County, every bulk item that you get picked up by appointment there is $30. So, if you got four items, that's a $120 bill for that one service. We come through, you could make an appointment every week here with four items or more often, and that's all part of the fee.
Maloney, $30 per bulk item?
Per item, yes, sir.
Jeez, okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, let's vote.
I thought you had a motion there, oh, good.
No, no. Any additional questions or discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Repeat the motion.
It's just a motion to approve the ordinance. Like that, something? Oh, you recognize?
So, I just, I just wanted to state that I've been very passionate about not increasing taxes. However, I don't want this entire budget, I don't want that decision to impact the entire budget. And so, because of that, I want to, I want to go on the record to say that this is not a flip-flop, or this is not confusion at any rate. I still stand behind the fact that I don't want taxes to increase at this point, however, there's lots of other things in our budget that are, whether it's our departments, all of our departments and our other millage agencies, I want those items to still move forward. So, because of that, I will vote yes for the, for the budget and the ordinance in theory. Thank you.
Ms. Barron, any additional discussion? You recognize, Ms. McBride?
Mr. Chair, thank you. There are some good parts to the budget, and there are some that I deem not so good. I think there are some transparency issues in certain areas, but overall, I think the council did on what they thought was best, and I think that there will be some good outcomes from this budget, and I think there will be some bad ones. Therefore, I will not be voting yes for the budget, but I do support some of the issues in the budget. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. McBride, and I'm ready to vote, but you said something that was a little disconcerting for me, and that is the suggestion that there are parts of this budget that are not transparent, and I don't want the residents of Richland County or anyone in this audience of those who are watching to think that this council is somehow operating in the dark. So, if you don't mind, I would just ask you to perhaps outline what part of the budget is, you know, opaque or not transparent.
Okay. Particularly, I had concerns about the transparency in the areas of grants with the budget, the grant process, and there are some areas in there that recommendations were made, and I didn't know who made the recommendations, and those are the part, not that I'm saying that the entire budget was not transparent, I said, in my opinion, there were some areas that were not transparent, and there were some areas that I felt that lacked equity. So, those are the concerns, when I say transparency and equity, that I am discussing.
I just, and the reason I asked the question, because I, again, I don't want people to have the impression that this council passed a budget in the shadows when we've had three readings and we've had a public hearing, and we went through nearly, you know, over, or close to 100 motions, and so, I just, you know, that comment gave me some angst.
Okay.
And I can only imagine what the media would report if it gets out that there's a council member who feels like the fiscal year '24 budget was not only inequitable, but also, inequitable, rather, but also not transparent. I just think that's the reputation that we don't want or want to, you know, convey to the citizens of Richland County. I believe this council, as well as administration, operates above board. I don't always agree with every vote, I don't always agree with every recommendation, but I've never impugned or questioned, you know, the integrity of those of us who govern, as well as those who are responsible for the administration of this government.
And I think that maybe you took it too far, because there could be transparency issues where they're not intentional, and those were my concerns, not whether they were intentional or not, that I had some transparency issues. And this is not the first time I mention it, I mentioned it from the beginning of the grant process to the end. So, those are my concerns, and I, I still do not think that anything was intentional, but there were some transparency issues, so I stick by that. Thank you.
If there's something unintentional, Ms. McBride, government doesn't get the benefit of the doubt.
I know, and that happens a lot, and that happens a lot in, in the votes we take and the decisions that we make.
Mr. Livingston is calling for the question, so, let's finish, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 15, second reading item.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Reconsideration.
Move for reconsideration.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There'd be none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton. Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 15, second reading items, 15A, authorizing the joint development and creation of a multi-county park with Fairfield County for the Scout Motors Project, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement governing the multi-county park. Authorizing the inclusion of certain property located in Richland County in the multi-county park and other related matters. Entertainer motion.
Move, Chair.
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda, item 15B, authorizing the execution, delivery of an amendment to fee in lieu of abilim taxes in special source revenue credit agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Mark Anthony Bruin, Inc., and an amendment to the additional project land purchase agreement by and between Richland County and Mark Anthony Bruin, Inc., and other related matters. Entertainer motion.
Move, Chair.
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 16, first reading item, an ordinance authorizing a deed to Allen University for 1741 Cushingman Drive, Columbia, South Carolina, Richland County, TMS number 14103-02-20A. Entertainer motion.
Move.
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
For Pew's, I am a proprietor of Alkadia Allen University.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 17, Report of Administration and the Finance Committee that would be given by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the committee brings forward a recommendation, uh, to have administrator and staff move forward with the balance time, uh, property purchase as discussed in executive session.
Heard the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
This is Neen, Raysho? Yes.
Yes.
Move for reconsideration?
Second.
Properly second, any discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brown, um, Brenham? Pew?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Motion fails.
That concludes the report of the A&amp;F Committee?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda is item 18, Report of the Economic Development Committee that would be given by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, item 18A, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 Corridor Reason Industrial Park jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to, uh, to Project Main View. This is a third, um, this is the first reading item for a 250 apartment, apartment complex located on, you know, about 5.3 acres at the old Jim O'Callaghan dealership on North Main. The development represents an investment of some $50,000, $50-plus million dollars. Uh, the company, Public Infrastructure, includes about $12 million in investments in landscaping, utilities, lighting, sidewalks, and some 360 parking spaces. The committee's recommendation, um, is for approval.
All right, you've heard the recommendation of the committee, any discussion or questions? Uh, you recognize, uh, Mr. Raysho?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question would be, uh, how much of these public improvements are those that would not have had to happen anyway in the course of, uh, just creating the bill, you know, creating the apartments? So, you know, you're building an apartment, building, you have to put in utilities, you have to do certain things. What is going, what in this project is going above and beyond?
Some of the sidewalks and the lighting and the landscape are some of the things that'll be on what they would normally have to do.
So, okay, so basically, they're just doing what they would, what kind of would need to happen anyway? There's no, there's no extra.
I just, I just told you what was some of the extra, and you asked me, and I just told you what was extra. No, they're not, they don't have to do the sidewalk and stuff that they're doing, or some of the lighting, some of the, and some of the parking spaces, yeah.
Raysho, does that answer your question, or?
Yes, yes. So, so my understanding is that, uh, we're not getting any, any measurable benefit to the public for this, uh, for this.
Well, we getting, um, taxes on some $50 million, um, jobs, I think that makes, yes.
Mr. Raysho, I mean, what I'm looking at, it's, looks like they're investing about 12.9 million in infrastructure. So it looks like you got a parking deck involved, there's some utility construction, there's some paint on Main Street, demolition and blight, uh, eradication, sidewalks, some landscaping, irrigation as well. In, in addition to the 10 jobs that are being created, eight that are full-time and two that are part-time. All right, thank you, Mr. Raysho. Any additional questions or discussion? All right, there'd be a nun. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That completes the report of the Economic Development Committee.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item 19, Report of the Rules and Appointments, uh, Committee that would be given by the Honorable Gretchen Behr. Ms. Behr, you recognize, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, don't sound so excited about it. You're like, let's do this, right? So, uh, we do have several appointments. And our first appointment is for the work, I'm sorry, the Board of Zoning and Appeals. There were four vacancies. We are making a, are recommending an appointment for S. Blakeley, Copeland, Co- Kohan, Kahoon, and Mandy Lotzenheiser.
And, okay, you've heard the recommendation of the committee. Uh, any questions or discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote with respect to, uh, item 19A1AB.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Ms. Behr?
Next appointment recommendation is for the Workforce Development Board. Uh, the committee is recommending to reappoint Harry Plexico and to appoint Eileen Kershaw and Danielle Diaz.
All right, you've heard, heard the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There'd be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Ms. Behr, do you need a vote for reconsideration on any of these items?
No, sir.
All right. And that concludes the report of the Rules and Appointments Committee? All right, thank you, Ms. Behr. Next, next item on the agenda is item 20, Report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee that would be given by the Honorable Overture Walker. Item 28, Innovista Project, uh, Innovista Phase III, rather, project funding. Uh, the committee recommends that council approve the City of Columbia's request to receive the remaining, uh, balance of funds from the $50 million Innovista Project, uh, Phase, uh, Phase II of the pro, well, upon completion of Phase II, uh, of the project, uh, the remaining balance is $4.5 million that would be used to supplement other funding provided by the city for Phase III of Innovista. And the city will, uh, draw on the fund via a reimbursement process. That is the recommendation of the committee. Any questions, discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Uh, next item is item 20B. This is a proposed Chapter 21 parenthetically dirt road paving ordinance amendment. An ordinance amending the Richland County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Roads, Highways and Bridges, Section 21-20, Road Paving Program, subsection I, so as to remove, uh, specific language. Uh, the committee recommends removing the requirement in Chapter 21 that allows 25% of property owners to decline a road paving project. The gist behind, not the gist so much, I could say the aim, uh, behind the recommendation is to allow, uh, the Department of Public Works, uh, to move, uh, move forward expeditiously with the, uh, paving of dirt roads in Richland County. As I understand it, under the current ordinance, um, 25%, you know, of homeowners on this, on a roadway can, you know, deny, uh, or refuse, um, you know, the, your paving of a road. And the example provided, uh, by Director Maloney was that you can have four houses on a dirt road. One person on that road doesn't want the road paved. And so that one person ends up deciding for the vast majority. And so it has, uh, been a challenge, uh, to get roads paved in Richland County in an expeditious manner. And so that is the, uh, you know, reason, you know, for the recommendation from the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. So any questions or discussion? You recognize, uh, Mr. Brenham?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I, I know this is a very impactful, uh, proposed change to, to an ordinance. And, and I like the direction that's proposed in trying to facilitate, you know, more of these projects that have been identified as appropriate under, uh, the right criteria, uh, to proceed. Um, I, a- as the chair knows, I grew up on a dirt road, um, out in Hopkins and.
Get them up every day on the bus.
Yeah. I should, I should have called my dad in here, uh, to, to talk about how, how he wanted his road, our road paved, uh, out in Hopkins for as long as we lived out there, a couple decades. And, and from what I understand, one, one property owner blocked it, um, the entire time. And, and I don't know if the ordinance had been amended in, since then, up to the 25% threshold, but, and, and I apologize that I wasn't at the committee meeting to talk through this, but I wondered if 50% would help us get more into that, that principle or that realm of majority rule where, um, unless more than 50% of the homeowners object to it, then, then it should be able to proceed.
Or Director Maloney, would you care to come down and speak to that?
Recognize it. Uh, I, I think that's the will of the council. It's, um, you know, w- w- our recommendation is to pave the road. So, um, what we presented back in January is that we do have funds committed into designs, land acquisition processes that are sitting, uh, because we have some percentage of the roads being blocked by consent denial or just inability to acquire the right of way following even a positive consent denial. So this is the start of it, uh, the consent denial process, we're asking it to be removed. If we run into a situation where a, a vast majority of residents don't want, that, don't want the road paved, uh, we, we would bring that to administration and perhaps to ad hoc committee to talk about that specific and kind of give you a list of situations like that we run into. But we think if we, if we continue with this type of policy with a percentage in there, that we're going to be stuck with roads that we're not even moving forward with. And we're running out of roads that, what you'd call low-hanging fruit, to, you know, to be able to get them paved. That happened probably in the first three years of, with the PDT operating. Now we're, we're taking on all the challenges, uh, roads that need major drainage improvements and that. And people are saying no because they can't envision what we're planning to do, not just pave over gravel or sand that's out there, but to also fix drainage and other things that are necessary. So I'm asking for a proactive approach to that. And we would hold meetings with the neighborhoods to discuss the project more, which I don't, I'm not sure that occurred in the past.
The ordinance also includes, uh, a notice requirement as well. So it just wouldn't be the county going out there willy-nilly and just pouring asphalt.
Right, I did notice that. Um, and, and I would say just that, uh, as strange as it might seem to some people, there are roads of people that don't want the road paved. They, they don't want, uh, the speeding, you know, they don't, additional traffic that might come. So I know it's a balancing act there. I wondered if moving that threshold, so if a majority, uh, you know, did not want it paved, then we would hold off going from 25 to 51% or whatever. Would, would that impact, would that probably facilitate more of the projects that you have on hold right now because of the issue?
It would add some projects back, I don't have a number.
All right, I, thank you.
That's okay. And, uh, Mr. Brenham, you never have to apologize for not attending a committee meeting, okay? Yeah, yeah, no, never feel like you have to do that.
We apologize a lot.
Yeah, you, you recognized, uh, Mr. Livingston.
Yes, and, and, and I noticed Mr. Maloney's response was, you know, when, when you made, when fifty percent was mentioned was what of the will of the council is, and, and I'm more concerned about um what's the best for us based on um, um, staff recommendations and so forth. This is the first reading of my item. I'm, I, you know, I'm reluctant to go to the fifty percent without knowing the implications for that and that kind of thing. Can we handle that on the second reading, get more information for it, or something like that, or whatever? Might, I might be, I might feel better about it. Um, it might make a whole lot more sense, but I don't have no reason to know why it does or doesn't.
Mr. Maloney?
So I, what we could have before a second reading would be a, a number of um properties or roads that anticipate based on current consent denial uh that we, we could proceed with and those we couldn't if it were changed from twenty-five percent to fifty. And of course, if it was eliminated, it would be all open, so.
Director Maloney, if I rec- I recall correctly from the committee meeting, I think uh we are behind as far as uh the number of roads that we need to get paved, and this is also part of the reason for this request from staff, if I recall correctly?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, this, this particular program was the one that was behind. It's around thirty, thirty-five percent complete as compared to uh, uh, other programs, uh, between, you know, seventy-five and fifty percent complete.
So my, my intent is go ahead and move forward first reading, so at least we can keep it going, so it wouldn't hold up anything because.
Mr. Chair. You recognize, Mr. Brown? I think Attorney Wright had something as well, but uh just briefly, what I would ask you all to consider as you think through this is one of the feedback that we've gotten related to um service is our failure as staff to address roads. And so when you think about it from that perspective, what I'm asking is, as you consider that, remember the decision and then how that impacts your response to the staff and whether or not it was our work that wasn't done or there was a decision that was made that did not allow their work to be done. And what we've seen in the consent denial process is you have citizens who've complained to you as members that their work was promised and it didn't get done, and the reality of it is the team did what they could within the confines of the ordinance. And so when Mr. Maloney says we're trying to be proactive, we're trying to address what you've raised as an issue and that the citizens that you have spoken to raised as an issue because you hold me and my team responsible for that. So I would just ask you to consider all of that in your pot of consideration, and that would, I appreciate you listening to me, and that's the only thing I want to add, Mr. Chair, because this has been a, a hot button item for my team. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Wright?
Uh, yes, and another recommendation of staff as well as of the committee is just to remove that one line that has the twenty-five percent requirement. There's also, there's already in there the uh where the parties can give notice as to if they give a response once they get a notice about the potential road paving. So Wright, if you take the twenty-five percent out, then uh that allows staff or county council to determine this particular road um instead of putting a, a specific percentage. So if you put the fifty percent, then that just puts another, which you can do, that, but that puts another um percentage that you have to abide by with what the current request from, from the committee and from staff is just to remove that twenty-five percent um that's in the ordinance now and leave it uh with no percentage. And, you know, have it be a decision that you can get feedback from the people on the road, but it's the determination of this body to make.
I'm with Mr. Livingston. I mean, let's just, you know, get past first reading tonight, and we can talk later about fifty-one percent, seventy-five percent, eighty percent, or what have you, so. All right. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Branham.
Oh.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Newton. All right, that concludes the report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. Next item on the agenda is item twenty-one, Report of the Employee Evaluation and Oversight Ad Hoc Committee. That will be given by the Honorable Ms. Chiquis Newton. Uh, Ms. Newton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the committee has been working on developing a job description for the internal auditor position, and so we have distributed sample job descriptions from other municipalities as well as private organizations. That information was submitted to council members for feedback. We discussed that feedback um from council members, and the committee made a motion to ask Mr. Brown to develop, based on council's input and his desires, a job description for that position, which would then come back to council. And just as a reminder, whereas this is a position that can be created by council, and we can provide input on the job description, the administrator would actually be responsible for hiring and determining the management structure for this position. So we would um ask council to ratify that recommendation.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
That concludes the report of the Employee Evaluation and Oversight Ad Hoc Committee. Ms. Newton?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item twenty-two, Report of the Community Impact Grants Committee. That would be given by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the committee has brought forth in your packet um our recommended twenty-twenty-four Community Impact Grant application along with the Community Impact Grant Guidelines. Just as a, a reminder and, and for the record, the Community Impact Grants Committee is a newly formed committee to create transparency in the process of the way council uh reviews and gives out um community impact grants. The application has a proposed schedule included in it that would make funds available, um, excuse me, make application available uh beginning in July and with one through July thirty-first. And then those applications uh would come back to the committee for review, and then recommendations would be made to the full council before we are uh move forward with awarding. So again, the committee's recommendation is for approval of the twenty-twenty-four Community Impact Grant Application and Community Impact Grant Guidelines twenty-two A and B.
All right, heard the recommendation uh of the committee. Any questions or discussion? You recognize, uh, Ms. McBride?
Yes, um, who would be reviewing the applications at one point? And I know there are some minor revisions made to the former um community grant discretionary grant program. Before, they had council members and community members. So who are the reviewers now based on the new committee structure?
Thank you, committee members.
So all council members will be reviewing, the committee council members, and there will be no input from the community anymore? Is that correct?
Um.
For a re- for the review of the grants?
I recognize, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you recognize.
Thank you. Um, n- no, ma'am. I was not aware as far as the discretionary grant process that community members were a part of that process. So for the Community Impact Grant, um, of course, it would go through Zoom grants, and staff would do their normal review to just make sure all information was uh submitted as requested in the application and then bring forth the ones that were completed. The uh committee would do the review.
The community, um, the council members that are on the committee ranks each grant, and I'm sure that I, and they have the process that they would go through. Um, I, I just have concerns not having, um, for council members, and that was one of the reasons that I did not want to be on the committee for the council members to um review the grants. I felt that um while it's not a conflict of inter- interests, uh, it causes concerns. And um because it is a community suppo- a community grant process, I was concerned that the community, um, no, community members were no longer um involved in the review process. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. McBride. You recognize, Ms. Baron?
Um, so I have the pleasure of serving with uh Ms. Mackey on this committee, and, and I think that we did not discuss the actual review, like, who's actually reviewing it as it relates to past structure. And so um I would like to um just maybe lift this up to Ms. Mackey to say that I don't think that we have etched in stone who's reviewing. Is that correct?
Thank you. It was my understanding that the committee was reviewing, so if there was not a clear understanding of that in the committee, then we can definitely talk about that. But it was my understanding, based on our process, that the committee would be reviewing similar to the committee had been reviewing before. There was discussions in the committee related to um how would committee members access um the application to review, and it was discussed via Zoom grants similar to before. And so based off that, it, it was my assumption that we were still, as a committee, reviewing. There was no discussion of any other process of review.
And, and so if I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Recognize, Ms. Baron.
Um, you're absolutely correct, but in, in my, in my um thought process, I was assuming that we were adopting the review process that we had from discretionary grants. So there is some gray area. I, I fully support our application. Um, I fully support the um what we're doing, but you know, Ms. McBride did lift up a, a question that I, I just don't recall, I don't recall having that discussion, and.
And uh, Ms. Newton, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just had two questions. The first is, we asked about the impact areas for the project. It's question number five on page three sixty-eight, and I wondered if the committee had discussed having an other category or if that means we're only limiting our grants to those areas. And second, and I guess I didn't submit this question formally, it was something I had discussed with others. I would appreciate knowing where organizations have had success with implementing similar projects in the past. However, you rank their, that answer, you know, would be up to the body and the committee, but it is helpful to understand that information for me. So I had a question and a comment then. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone can respond to Ms. Newton's.
I can, Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Mackey?
Yes, the committee did consider uh the option of other for question number five, and it was decided in committee to not have an other category to really focus on key areas, and those are the areas that were listed.
And answer your question, Ms. Newton?
Thank you.
Okay. Any addition? Oh, you recognize, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. Uh, just for clarification, and this may be a question um for staff, just going back to Ms. Baron's comment. Can I get clarification in relation to the previous discretionary grant committee? Who served on the discretionary grant committee? Was it made up of community people and committee members?
I sat on the committee.
We'd have to take a look and find out, Ms. Ack. We don't, we don't know right offhand. Um, because we could look, yeah, take a look at, maybe we can look at the, the the grant information and see what's listed, because I think the discretionary grant, well, let me not get into that.
I just want to say.
Yes, it was.
Say, yes, it was what?
So, yeah, citizens.
Yeah, it was on that.
That committee.
So, okay, so I just want to ask, who's, just for clarification, who were, how were the citizens selected? Who selected those citizens? When did we select them?
Recognize, Ms. McBride?
I don't, I can't tell. This is prior to you all being on camp, on council. Uh, I actually sat on the committee, and I know, I think Mr. um Livingston has sat on the committee too, and we had, we had um community members. In terms of the selection of the community members, I do not know, but I do know we had community members.
Okay, so I, I do, Ms. Baron said something that I want to put in record. Ms. Baron said there was staff on the committee.
That's correct.
Staff is different than community people?
Oh, it's staff and community.
Oh, okay, so it's staff and.
And, I was in.
So there was staff and community people on the committee. Thank you. I would just would like to know who the community people were, and if we could find that information, I think that'd be helpful, I guess, when we're talking about.
Will y'all find a bring this into the process?
Any additional questions with respect to uh item twenty-two A? Questions, comments, you recognize, Mr. Racio?
Thank you, just really quickly. So the uh four hundred thousand dollars that was just allocated uh for community impact grants, that will also have a sixty-forty split. Is that correct? Am I, did I understand that correct, or no? No, okay. Can you tell, is that?
Recognize, Ms. Mackey.
Did I ask the question appropriately?
You did.
Okay.
So, Mr. Racio, that motion was just made today. So this is committee recommendations that happened at our committee meeting, so the committee has not had an opportunity to re- to discuss or have a recommendation for what was made today.
Okay, so we have, so I guess, to rephrase that, if this is passed as it's presented to us, the four, extra four hundred thousand dollars would be um also subject to that same split?
I mean, I, I, it could be.
I'm taking action on it yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't speak to it, so, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, you recognize, Ms. Newton?
Thank you. Uh, one, one more question. Um, looking at that sixty-forty split that's there, i- is there an opportunity for it to be up to, I mean, what if the organizations that are listed as community partners request less funds, or there is some reason why um they might need to be supported at a different level?
Uh, Ms. Mackey?
Yes, it can be up to. That was discussed in um committee, and if we need to edit language to fit that, we can, but in the committee, it was up to.
I may.
So if in the com-
Wait, Ms. Newton?
Sorry, if in the committee it was up to, should we assume that a yes vote tonight is enshrining that language?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I don't want us to make this more complicated than it should be. I don't serve on the committee, and certainly I'm going to, to, you know, defer, you know, to the recommendations of the committee, but if, as I recall, you know, the reason we came up with the Community Impact Grants Committee was so that we could streamline what was once known, a process that was once known, uh, you know, as um uh, what was it? No, not discretionary grants, uh, lump sum agencies. And as I recall, there was, I don't recall all this, I guess, community input at that time. It was council members who were uh making a motion uh requesting funds uh from the general fund to support a local organization of their choice, and so the aim behind this committee was to streamline that process. And so I'm just, I'm a little befuddled that we're trying to figure out suddenly, well, how do you get community input when you didn't have that previously? Um, so again, I don't think we overcomplicate this. Uh, those organizations that were getting funding, uh, received funding previously through, I guess, lump sum requests, still have the opportunity to receive funding. They can just go and apply or submit the grant as opposed to relying on a council member to make a motion uh before full council. It gets scored or how the, the committee is going to vet it, and it'll still come before the full council. And if a council member disagrees with the findings of the committee, he or she can, oh, you know, put their feelings on the record and make a motion at that time. But I just, I don't think we need to, uh, you know, complicate, to me, what seems to be uh rather simple. Uh, you recognize, Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Chair, in the view of time, can I make a motion to vote on this?
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, it came out of committee.
So the recommendation, uh, so, so, yeah.
Well, I'll call the question then.
Yeah, Mr. Weaver's called for the question, so Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Item twenty-two A, correct?
That's correct.
This is twenty-two A and B.
Now, you.
I, yes, my motion was a recommendation for twenty-two.
I heard it. Covers A and B, okay.
But I said it, it said A and B.
Well, you get no argument from me. This covers A and B. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And for the record, Ms. McBride had to leave on this evening's meeting a little early. Um, she has a family obligation. Next item on the agenda is item twenty-three, Report of the Coronavirus Ad Hoc Committee that would be given by the Honorable Gretchen Barron. Ms. Baron, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Coronavirus Ad Hoc Committee met uh to take up an item of, to discuss unallocated funds. We had several conversations in the, during our budget hearings uh about, you know, making recommendations to use excess funding. And so the committee did get together and we met and came up with a couple of recommendations, one of which we've already um made during the motion period. Another recommendation that the committee has uh before council tonight, excuse me, I lost, uh, is to set aside the one million dollars of the ARPA allocations for youth and recreation services to specifically fund recreation activities for youth using a process to be determined by council. Any funds not in this category, I'm sorry, any funds not in this category not committed by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four and expended by October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four will be used to fund the construction of the Family Service Center. I know Ms. Newton is online, but uh she, this is something that she felt very passionate about. She, she made this motion in our committee initially during our process of setting aside the sixteen million dollars, and we did receive several applications. However, it did not meet the expectation and the intent of which uh the committee uh set these funds aside. So we would like to, um, we would like to set this one million dollars aside um to not be uh used in any other way besides that of youth and recreation services.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. You've heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? You recognize, Ms. uh, Mackey?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Baron, can, just, just to clarify, this, by, I guess, voting yes for this motion, this states that the committee will not be awarding any nonprofits that apply for this category. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Aaron, does that conclude your report?
Uh, we have one, one other item.
Okay.
And the other item is, and before I make the recommendation, I, I want to give a caveat because I had an opportunity to speak to several of our colleagues uh about this particular item. So we're, we're going to make a recommendation um to utilize any balance that's left over in the categories that we presently have not awarded um to be used uh for the families. to be used for the Family Service Center specific to nonprofit, nonprofit assistance, workforce training, education assistance, senior assistance, food insecurity, broadband services, and unhoused persons. It would not include the funding for youth and recreation services or affordable housing allocations. So to further explain this motion, we already set aside in our previous recommendation the $1 million for youth and recreation services. We also have already set aside the $4 million in affordable housing. This motion does not include that. It also does not say that we are not going to award any nonprofits in these categories. What it says is that once we continue our process during our meeting on June 27th, that once the staff, they do their final vetting and make the awards, any excess funds would go to the Family Service Center.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? All right, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. I just want to say, I do, I just have concern right now about voting for the committee's recommendation simply because we don't have a dollar amount yet. And I think I would feel better knowing what that dollar amount is before we just say whatever it is is going to the DSS building. I know we have other facilities and other needs that maybe we could look at setting that aside to, you know, EOS or 911. And so I guess for me right now, I, I'm in support of allocating unused funds. I'm just not at the point where I want to say blanketly everything goes to DSS at this point because I don't know the dollar amount.
About to call for the vote. Ms. Newton, you're recognized. Ms. Newton?
Sorry, it took me a while to unmute myself. So thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Chair. And I just want to acknowledge Councilwoman Mackey's comments and the feelings of any other council members who feel that way. I guess I just wanted to say that the intent behind my motion is, you're right. There are many, many facilities that need funding. That is absolutely correct. I just think that this streamlines the process because we have had such a thorough vetting process of our applications. It looks like in some categories, there's going to be funding left. We know that DSS is, or Family Services Center is something that we are obligated to take care of by law. We are required to provide them with a facility. We know that construction costs have risen and that it's going to be an expensive endeavor. And the additional benefit that we have of funding the Family Services Center is that we also know that these funds are eligible to fund the DSS Center or the Family Services Center in addition to knowing that we can expend it by all the deadlines so that we don't leave money on the table. And so my concern is, one of the beauty of having a deliberative body is that we're a deliberative body. One of the challenges sometimes when you have a timeline is that we can get caught in a really long process and then we could potentially end up losing the money. Whereas we know that there is a need with the Family Services Center. We know that we're already currently planning to construct it and we can fulfill it within the guidelines. And it just gives a peace of mind as we go through awarding funds for the Coronavirus Committee to know that any leftover funds are going to go towards a good purpose and nothing's going to get caught in any sort of administrative or procedural rigmarole. So I would ask my colleagues to support this motion because it is a critical need for the county and I certainly respect and understand any reservations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Are we ready to vote? All right. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, Ms. Baron, does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Baron.
Does that motion require reconsideration? I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Chair.
Move to reconsider.
Second. Properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Oh, Mr. Brown, Item 28, the Innovista Phase 3 Project Funding. Does that item need to be reconsidered or are we okay? Over reconsideration, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right. Move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride? Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion fails.
All right, entertain emotional items 24A1 and 24B1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Move to properly second. Any discussion?
I would just like to add, Mr. Chairman, that the four-year-old drought in District 6 for age tax funds is now officially over tonight with this vote. Let me just say that.
All right. I'm calling, I'm calling.
Champagne in the back.
I'm calling your predecessor as soon as I leave from here. All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Oh, yes.
Teresa?
A yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
S.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Over reconsideration.